Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Village of Northfield Regular Council Meeting of December 13th, 2017. So I'm rise for pledge.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, free and honest.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Magistrally.
Here.
Mr. Scher.
Here.
Ms. Domsalski.
Here.
Mr. Hips.
Here.
Ms. Noack.
Here.
Mr. Boitouche.
Here.
Mr. Brian.
Here.
Mr. Wasowski.
Here.
Chief Zolgus.
Here.
Filling in for Chief Bus is Lieutenant Zemec. Harold is absent and I am present.
Approve of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hips, seconded by Ms. Noack, to approve the minutes of the November, was it the 20th meeting? Any questions, comments, amendments? All in favor of approval?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Minutes are approved, Mayor.
Anyone in the audience at this time have anything for us? Hearing none, moving on. Forceful municipal officers? The mayor doesn't have anything at this time? Finance director, Ms. Ingracia?
Unfortunately for everyone, I have a lot of stuff, but I'll try and make it short and sweet as it's snowing and I have children to pick up. Okay, so first thing, I don't have November's reports finalized, there's a few more journal entries that need to be made to reconcile, so hopefully by January you'll have both November and December. It is reconciled, it's just there's some minor adjusting that needs to be done. Temporary appropriations are in front of everyone for this evening's agenda. Standard procedure, we have probably a quarter or more of what is going to occur next year. It's just to make sure that we can pay people in bills in the first quarter, nothing fancy. The amendments and transfers, I'm not going to go into too many specifics here because there are so many. This is the last one I get to do this year, the county cut me off, cannot amend the Certificate of Estimated Resources past the 20th of December, so I'm praying for no emergencies or any uninvited, unwanted occurrences within the village. The significant items on here are the emergency expenditures, the $268,515.97, that's what we've been practicing for a couple of years now to try and build up the fund so we can pay for emergencies should they arise. That's an encumbrance, it's not an amendment. And, so Service Department, at the end of the year, I'm going to be moving money from the general fund to the sewer fund. It's approximately, right now, my guesstimation for the last pay of the year is around $88,000. That will require an increase in the sewer fund appropriations for personnel services. Fire levy always requires a little bit more cash at the end of the year to get them through the first quarter. The TIF to the GF is a repayment for the purchase of 199 Ledge and the Houghton Summit Sewer that we paid for, I think it was in '13 or '14. That's the final reimbursement to the general fund from the TIF. And then earned benefits, I'm asking to move another $75,000 in preparation for those that are leaving us, for payment of sick balances and whatnot. And then finally, everybody received a report, and I was trying to make it so that, I forgot to hit color, but you'll see some of the, there's some gray markings on the report. These are the encumbrances that may be carried forward, since this is the last meeting of the year, I would like a motion to approve the encumbrances carried into 2018. Some items that are on here are still the Carbo project for the presidentials, as Rich hasn't given me the bill yet. We have outstanding payments for Lockhart for their retainage. We have the Cruiser, the new Cruiser, and the upfitting of the new Cruiser outstanding. I know Jason Bus has some equipment that needed repairing that's outstanding. The Service Department has some supply purchases that are outstanding, and actually some outstanding storm damage supplies. We still have these zoning overlay district outstanding, and the biggest chunk of it will be the emergency expenditures, which is about $153,671 right now. So the total amount I'm asking you to approve by motion for carry forward into 2018 is And the purpose of this is that if we close them out, then we have to take it out of next year's budget, and I certainly don't want to do that. And I thought for sure I read something in the code that said we had to have everything closed out, but I just think that's silly. So if you guys approve it by motion, I'm crossing my fingers that the auditors are going to be okay with that. You did it last year, I think it was a lot less last year, but we have a lot of big projects hanging out there, so can I have a motion for that, please? May I have a motion?
Tricia, could I ask?
Yes.
Were all these in our budget for this year?
Oh yeah, yeah, they're already encumbered and budgeted, and yes.
I'll make the motion to second through that.
Motion by Mr. Boitouche, seconded by Mr. Magistrally. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion is adopted.
I think I've got, if that's it, thank you very much.
Mr. Osowski, engineer.
Ledge Road Phase Two final plans, I'm still working on those and doing the right-of-way work now also. The Village, or City of Macedonia asks that we put some underground storage in there at the east end of the job, which drains into Macedonia because of the flooding problems they have down at Ledge Road, at Bedford Ledge, so we're going to do that. We're probably going to ask NERSD to pay for that storage with the stormwater fund money that we get every year. I think we have about $78,000 in that fund right now, so I'll talk to them about that. And Macedonia will pay their share, and we'll pay our share. Presidential subdivision mill and fill, Carbo finished the final check punch list, and he'll be back next spring to touch up any of the seeding areas it didn't take, because we seeded pretty late this year. The final construction cost was $1,131,787.25, and that came, job came in under budget substantially by $140,584.25. The Service Department has some minor house connection adjustments to do on Washington Drive and ramping, I think, of three driveways on Maple Avenue, and they'll do it as soon as they can get to it, they've been pretty busy with the storm damages and so forth. In the RSD Stormwater Funding Workshop, I went to that program on November 28th, they gave us the forms to fill out for requesting our money, we get 25% of our fees that we pay to them each year come back to us to use for projects they approve. I will get a list of which ones I think we should do. We can use for maintenance too, like cleaning out the basins, we can charge our time for that on that. Russo's piece of flooding, I did some more calculations on the flooding over there because of the problem we have with the openings on the catch basins. The openings are severely, very small. Normally a catch basin is a seven-inch opening, those in front of Russo's have about a one-inch opening. I sent my entire report to ODOT, actually I sent it today, the entire report. We'll see if we're going to do anything. I'm not holding my breath on this, you know, they kind of were real reluctant to commit anything, along with Jason, I met with him in the field, but we'll see. That's my report.
Thank you, Rich. Mr. Brian, law director.
Mayor.
Yes, sorry.
Cast Rich a question.
Absolutely.
Rich, on Route 8 where those basins are at, that they're real small.
Yeah.
If the state comes back and says they're not going to do anything, is it feasible or legal for us to fix those?
Yes, it is. By contract, we're responsible for the drainage by contract, they're only responsible for the pavement, but to fix the drainage the way it should be done, we have to tear up the pavement. They kind of suggested that they let us do that, mill and fill the roadway. Well, I don't want to mill and fill because we'll make a hazardous situation driving-wise. We'll put trench drains in in front of those basins. If they tell us, you know, they're not going to do anything, we'll just put, we'll cut open and put trench drains in front.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, Mr. Brian, law director.
Thank you, Mayor. First, we have the November 2017 Mayor's Court Monthly Dispersal Report for Acceptance, and total to be dispersed is $13,318.16. Total due to the State of Ohio, $1,784. No money to Stowe Municipal Court, $51 to the City of Stowe, and $90 for restitution. Total due to the village, $11,393.16 is our motion for acceptance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Noack, seconded by Mr. Magistrally. Any questions? All in favor of acceptance?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? And the other issue I have, Mayor, is that you're aware of, we received a request from a prospective business to execute a, what's called a Trex liquor license permit, it's a form, that the village is out of liquor licenses, there's an entity that's talking about going into the dolphin space and would like to purchase a liquor license from outside the village and get it moved in. In order to do that, we have to sign the Trex permit to allow the Ohio Liquor Commission to consider that. In order for us to do that, the project has to be considered an economic development project, and that means that, you know, there should be some sort of plans, they have to identify the number of jobs created, projected earnings, projected tax revenues, and total financial investment in the project. So I did receive that information and some proposals, it's, you know, confidential at this point. Mr. Magistrally, I think council should, we did meet with the applicant, we did hear from Mr. Chaffron. I think we need to schedule some sort of meeting, we told the person it would be very difficult to schedule that in December due to everyone's schedules, and so I think whenever council can schedule that, I would schedule in conjunction with another, some sort of other work session or other meeting. I don't know if you're, we're able to schedule that today, or we'd have to wait till after the first of the year to get a date where everyone knew they could come, but I think the mayor would like to kind of discuss the issue, see if we collectively consider this to be a significant enough economic development project that we want to allow another license to be brought in to the village and get back to the applicant. He did ask that we sign it immediately, and Mr. Chaffron asked that also, we advised them we don't work that way, we are more deliberative in our decision-making process.
Well, I, my question before we even schedule a meeting, by the way, councilors, I don't think we have time this year, we'll do it maybe the second meeting of 2018. Economic development in the plaza, that's an interesting question or statement. My question is, what kind of development is, can happen in the plaza? We seem to have so many problems with the roof, with the heat, with the air conditioning. I think that we can schedule this meeting for the second meeting of 2018 in January. It is the 24th, I believe.
Yes.
And I encourage everyone to maybe, not even do any research, what type of economic development is one liquor license going to do for the plaza?
And I can get-
I'm puzzled, so.
And I can get information out to everyone at a time so you know what the proposal says, but this is not new construction, this is-
A proposal to go into the existing dolphin space.
So, what does that again, Brad? It's not new construction?
Correct.
So we're talking the 24th, that would also be the same evening as finance, so what time do you want to have this?
You're going to have two months of finance.
Pardon me?
You're going to have two months to go over in finance.
Yes, right, so we can figure, I guess, when the finance meeting will be.
I'll move the finance meeting at 6:00.
And we'll do work session 6:30?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hips.
Good, thank you, that's all for my report.
I think I also want to bring something else up, Mr. Magistrally had brought to my attention that they would like to, council came to Mr. Magistrally, or I think someone did, and he brought it to my attention about canceling the last council meeting of the month, which I'm fine with as long as council is, I talked to the department heads, it should not be a problem, talked to finance, it should not be a problem, so it's up to everyone here. No, I mean for, you know, passing things for the end of the year, it should not be a problem. Don't know what you want to do with that, Mr. Magistrally.
Well, you know, it was brought to my attention that we didn't take our summer meeting off, we usually take a break, one meeting off in the summer, we were very busy this year, and it's the end of the year, I talked to Ms. Ingracia, we can do the, a double finance meeting on the 24th of next month, and I'd just like to leave that, it's falling right by Christmas. Spend some time with our family, we have a big year ahead of us, and I just think it's a good idea.
I'll make the motion to suspend it, if a motion needs to be made.
Motion by Mr. Boitouche, seconded by Ms. Domsalski, any other comments? All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Okay, moving on to department heads, Police Chief John Zolgus.
Thank you, Mayor. I gave everybody a copy of my report, if there's any questions on that or any other questions. Two things I would like to mention is that we do have that secondary rollover line at dispatch, that's all in place, a couple of weeks ago they got it finalized. They actually had to run an analog line, they thought it was all digital, but no, because the first line is analog, they had to run another analog line, so it took extra time. And I don't think we incurred extra costs on it, Chief Cold, they didn't say anything to me about it, but it's all set in place, we've tested it, so that's good to go. And second of all, I attended the Metro Crash Response Team out of Summit County, what they do is they come out and any bad accidents that you had that required fatalities or that are serious, serious injuries, they will come out and assist you and do their own report, they take all the measurements, the photographs, so on and so forth. We had looked into this a couple of years ago, but we never did it, and I feel that we, it's time that we need to, so we're going to put that in the budget for next year, and I just believe the membership is like $600. So, and that team is comprised of officers from police departments for Summit County and Portage, and all the training is free, other than paying the officer's time and call-outs when he goes. So that's what we're going to look for for January. Thank you, that's it, that's all I have.
Thank you. The fire chief is not here, in his place is Lieutenant Zemec.
I don't have a real report, I just want to mention a couple of things. Obviously Sunday we have our Santa around the village, so we're looking forward to doing that. East side's in the morning, 9:00 and 12:00, west side is 1:00 to 4:00. And the other thing I want to mention, I just want to thank the police department and City Hall and everybody for helping out with evacuation today. Tony Mackey and Ed Carlisle helped out evacuating the daycare.
Do you want to kind of explain what happened today?
We had, I wasn't there personally, I was on a different call, but we had odor of gas over in the plaza, and ended up getting some high carbon dioxide readings, so we ended up doing some investigation, gas company came out, so we had to evacuate the daycare because of the readings, so we will be following up with them in the morning. Yep, and that's all I have.
And Brad, you'll be following up with Emile and Howard about when that meeting is going to be for their liquor license?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Service Building Superintendent Jason Walters is not present, I'd just like to thank the Service Department for the wonderful job that they did, chipping branches and getting the leaves all done, it was a job well done. Moving on to the reports from municipal boards and commissions, Mr. Hips, the planning commission?
No report this evening.
Recreation Board, Recreation Board did meet, there's going to be a party at the fire station from 5:00 to 7:00, there'll be two, there'll be a couple crafts there for kids to do, pictures with Santa, bring her own camera, and Mrs. Claus will be reading, there'll be a storytime with Mrs. Claus, so, from Spinato, so it should be a pretty good time. It's the 17th.
They going to light up that Christmas tree out there?
You don't have any power out by that.
Mayor, next meeting will be January 4th?
Yes, ma'am.
6:30.
Here at Town Hall. Cemetery Board, Mrs. Granley is not present, and if any of you didn't know, Mrs. Granley has been in and out of the hospital, she's been having problems. If anyone gets a chance, please, you know, kind of give her a call, see what's going on. I think she's home now, but she went twice, didn't she, Joe?
Three times.
Yeah? That's a update on Mrs. Granley, so... Does anyone else have anything from her, from Cemetery Board?
No report today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, reports that stand in committee, Mr. Magistrally of Finance.
We, I really don't have a report, just a reminder that we'll be doing a dual finance meeting on, in 2018, on the 24th of January.
Mr. Scher, Roads and Public Works.
I don't have anything to report today.
Okay. Mrs. Noack of Health and Welfare.
No report this evening, Mayor.
Mr. Boitouche, Wages and Working Conditions.
Also no report, Mayor.
Mrs. Domsalski of Fire and Safety.
No report this evening, Mayor.
Mr. Hips of Buildings and Grounds.
No report.
Legislation, Brad.
Thank you, Mayor. First, we have 2017-88, an emergency resolution authorizing the mayor to renew the village's agreement with the Legal Defender's Office of Summit County, Ohio, for indigent representation in Stowe Municipal Court on first reading, this is the renewal for 2018, the price per case stayed at, I believe it's $170, so there was no increase the last couple of years. So if there's a motion to suspend the three reading rule?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Noack, seconded by Mr. Magistrally, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Is there a motion to pass?
Motion to pass?
Motion by Ms. Noack, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Magistrally, any questions? Discussion? All in favor of passage?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Resolution is passed, next is 2017-89, an emergency resolution to make temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the village for the period from January 1st, 2018 through March 31st, 2018. Is there a motion to suspend-
Motion to skip the three readings.
Motion by Mr. Boitouche, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Magistrally, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Motion for passage.
Motion to pass for, made by Mr. Boitouche.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Noack, any discussion? All in favor of passage?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Okay, the resolution is adopted, next is 2017-90, an emergency resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to transfer funds representing unclaimed income tax refunds to the village's unclaimed fund. Is there a motion to suspend the three reading rule?
Motion.
Second.
Motion.
By Mr. Magistrally, seconded by Ms. Domsalski, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Is there a motion to pass?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Magistrally, seconded by Ms. Noack, any discussion? I do have-
One question.
Else.
Was this the fund that you had to call and find something?
We dropped that.
Okay, thank you.
They didn't give us an answer on that, this is actually a return of refunds that were outstanding with CCA.
Thank you. So, right, the money will go into unclaimed funds, if anyone wants to claim it, it'll be paid out of that fund, and after the requisite period, we can transfer it in the general fund and, at that point. All in favor of passage?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Okay, the resolution is adopted, and next is 2017-91, an emergency resolution continuing appointment of Richard S. Wasowski of Euthenics, Inc. as the Village of Northfield Municipal Engineer for the period January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2019, and Rich is interested in continuing to work for the village for the next two years.
I'd like to make a motion to skip the three readings.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Magistrally, seconded by Ms. Noack, all in favor?
Yes.
All opposed?
Motion for passage?
Second.
Motion to pass by Mr. Hips, seconded by Ms. Noack, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passage?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Okay, resolution is adopted, and last-
Welcome back, Rich.
There was a hesitation there in your yes, we were kind of, we were all kind of on edge.
The longest-tenured village official.
You're stuck with us now.
Last is 2017-92, an emergency resolution authorizing certain amendments to the 2017 appropriation resolution and/or transferring items already appropriated in that resolution. Is there a motion to suspend the three reading?
Motion to suspend.
Motion by Mr. Boitouche, seconded by Ms. Noack, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Is there a motion to pass?
Motion for passage.
Motion by Mr. Boitouche to pass, seconded by Ms. Domsalski, any discussion? All in favor of passage?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Resolution is adopted, and that's it for the legislation, Mayor.
At this time, is there any old business, new business, or announcements?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Scher and Ms. Noack?
No, you go ahead.
Just wanted to add on to what you were saying about the Service Department, it takes great pride to see what our village looks like, when I live right across the street from Macedonia, and they're still waiting for everything to get done, so kudos to our Service Department, job well done.
There's a lot. New business.
Mr. Scher.
New business. Last meeting, beside myself, I don't like to do this, but it's my duty, last meeting, or before the meeting, Mr. Boitouche had his recorder going over here, and he walked off, and I'm just bringing this up to council's attention, because I do believe the last time that transpired, he was told that that was not a thing that he should be doing, and so, I'm sorry, but it is my duty to bring it up, so we could go from there.
I would like to make a comment on that, was, I was commenting with you, asking about the ex-police chief's wife who had passed away and asked-
um, ex-police chief's wife who had passed away, and asked if we did anything about, uh, having a moment of silence for her. And when you told me no, I jumped up and ran into the office of the mayor. And, uh, the mayor and I were conversating, uh, about that issue and, um, the, the, uh, reports that I had heard in my part-time positions. And I did, uh, a few seconds later, the mayor-director came in and said, uh, asked me about my recorder, and the two words I said were, "Oh shit," and I jumped up and ran out of the room at that point. Um, I did not realize, I'm sorry I used those words, but I did not realize that I left it on. It was not done intentionally, and as soon as I walked into the room, I apologized to everyone in the room for that. So, it was not done intentionally.
Does anyone else have anything to say on that topic?
Well, Mr. Voitich, I'm glad your recorder isn't here today.
Um, I, it is not, I, you know, I, I just, you know, accidents happen in a lot of ways and in different situations, I, um, you can get all this information, it's being copied, and you put yourself in a bad position when you did that, I guess. That's why I'm glad it's not here. Um, I, I know things happen, I, I just, uh, if it could be, uh, any advice at all, you know, you can get a copy of everything that goes on at the meeting, word for word, emailed to you the next day. I, I think that might be the safest way to, um, go forward.
Well, like I said, af- after that last time, I did feel bad that that happened, and I apologized immediately because it was not my intention to have that happen.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, I'm going to say it early because we're not going to have our next meeting, Merry Christmas to everyone.
Same to you.
And your families? Happy death.
So, a lot of big things are coming to the village in two thousand and eighteen, and I, I guess I'm going to be a father in June, so.
Congratulations.
Welcoming a, a little girl into the family. Um, it's, it's early to know that, but, uh, due to some genetic testing, we're, we're, we're in know, knowledge of that at this point, so. In, in June, we'll, I'll have to have the addition done to the house so I can have the addition to the family.
Congratulations.
Yeah, wait until they turn two.
Alan, I still have a lot of baby clothes.
I got a lot of boy clothes, so if you need, boy.
Ms. Dumsalsky?
Um, so Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, Happy Birthday to me, next time we see you guys, and hopefully we'll have a baby, so I'd like to adjourn the, uh, meeting tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Noack, all in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? We're adjourned at eight oh three, eight oh three.
Thank you everyone for coming tonight.
Enjoy Christmas.